Last deck.
I'm here.
Okay. All right, 7:15, right on the nose. And with that, good evening, everyone, and welcome to October 14th City Council Meeting. I'll call the meeting to order, and then Matt or Jorge, if you could put up the flag and if everybody would just want to recite it to yourself in your comfort of your home for seconds. Thank you. All right, okay, thank you. And then Allison, could we get a roll call, please?
Rich Kellum.
Here.
Bill Coburn.
Here.
Bessie Johnson. Alex Johnson II.
Here.
Dick Olson.
Here.
Mike Sykes.
Here.
Sharon Canopa.
Here, and then Bessie is excused.
Thank you.
Uh huh. Okay, our, the special presentation that's on the agenda that has been changed, that'll be at another council meeting coming up. So then that goes to item number four, which is the public hearing. And this is going to be for the sale of the 520 Pine Street Southeast with the lease purchase option. With that, I will open up the public hearing at 7:16 PM. And Kim, I think you came on board, are you taking the lead on this one?
I am.
Okay, there you are.
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. Thanks so much for having us here. So we are hoping tonight to check off yet another step in the four-step process for the Cumberland Community Event Center. And so I'm here tonight to ask Council to hold a public hearing on the sale of the lots that Mayor Canopa mentioned, which is 520. That is the lot that the building is initially going to be moved on, and that would be for $69,000. And then for lots 540, 560, 524, 580, which are the remaining three lots that we have the lease-to-buy option over the next three years. We figured we would go ahead, since it's all kind of one package together, bring it to public hearing and get the resolution passed on all of it at one time to help create smooth sailing as we move forward. So are there any questions?
Okay. Any councilors have any questions? Okay, there was one person that wanted, that had signed up earlier to speak on behalf of the sale. And I don't know if person's on, but the name is Riley Nix. And if there's somebody on the phone, or does anybody name that I'm missing it?
Not seeing anyone with that name.
Okay. And I'm not sure. Let's see, Cameron Settlemeyer's on for the Cumberland, he's part of the Cumberland. Cameron, do you know a...
It would show it, because it shows you on your list.
Okay, somebody just came on.
Yeah, there's a caller too, but their audio is causing feedback.
Hey Mayor, can you unmute yourself, we just have to mute everybody for a second. Sorry about that.
Okay, so kind of the last call is for Riley Nix. Is she on? If so, you would need to turn your microphone on. Okay, well, not seeing anyone. Was there anybody else that wanted to speak on this public hearing? And this is for the sale of the 520 Pine Street property to the Cumberland Community Events Center. Okay, I'm not seeing anybody. Before I close the public hearing, Council, do you have any other questions on this?
What was the sale price?
Sorry, I had to unmute. The sale price for the first lot is $69,000. And for the remaining three lots, it'll be a combined additional $207,000.
Thank you.
Okay, so with that, I will close the public hearing at 7:20 PM. And Council, you have a resolution on page five.
I'll move for adoption of the resolution.
I'll second that.
All right, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carried. I bow. All right, thank you, thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
Okay, and next, this would be on 4B, this is the Albany Development Code text amendments. I had to print this out on my printer, and bear with me, it came out small print here. So next on our agenda is a legislative public hearing regarding Planning File DC-0320. The applicant is the City of Albany Community Development Department Planning Division. I call to order this legislative public hearing at 7:21 PM. If you wish to testify, there will be two options available, which were described on the agenda. For all those wishing to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford the council and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue if you later want to raise that issue on appeal. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards approval standards staff will describe or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or development code which you believe apply to the decision. If the additional documents or evidence are provided by any party, the council may allow a continuance or leave the record open to allow the parties a reasonable opportunity to respond. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of appeal with enough detail to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. At this time, I call for the staff report from project planner David Martino.
Good evening, Jorge or Matt, could you please let me share my screen?
You're set, David, you can unmute yourself as well, please.
Thank you very much. So tonight, I will just go over the latest as far as the accessory dwelling unit development code amendments. For some of you, these will look familiar, since we've talked about these before on a few occasions, so just a few slides to go over some of the preliminaries. Let's see. So right now in the city, the current standards, before these code amendments are considered, you can have an accessory dwelling unit either as an addition to or within a primary residence, or you can have them in a detached building that's built before 1998. And one of the residences has to be owner occupied, no more than 50% of the gross floor area, or 750 square feet, whichever is less. The current code requires three off-street parking spaces to serve both residences. All required building permits have to be obtained, and it also needs to meet setback standards, and they are limited to a maximum height of 24 feet. So the state requirement is that, excuse me, just a minute here. So the minimum requirement for the state is the city with a population greater than 2,500, or county with a population greater than 15,000, shall allow an area zone for detached single-family dwellings, the development of at least one accessory dwelling unit for each detached single-family dwelling, subject to reasonable local regulations relating to siting and design. And so as used in this section, an accessory dwelling unit means an interior attached or detached residential structure that is used in connection with, or that's accessory to the single-family dwelling. So the key point here is that in this original legislation, this is the time when the state decided that we have to also allow detached residential structures, ADUs, as opposed to just interior or attached ones. Now, the rules were further updated with requirements from House Bill 2001, which was signed into law on August 8, 2019. And in that bill, the legislation states that reasonable local regulations relating to siting and design does not include owner occupancy requirements of either the primary or accessory structure, or the requirements to construct additional off-street parking. So the proposed code amendments tonight, accessory dwelling units may be attached, detached, or within an existing dwelling. We are required to remove the owner occupation requirement. We also have to remove the additional requirement for an off-street parking space to serve the accessory dwelling unit. The proposal tonight calls for having an area up to 900 square feet, or 50%, whichever is less, and we clarified definitions of what it was to be an accessory dwelling unit. So there's two review criteria that apply to these amendments. The first one states that the proposed amendments better achieve the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan than the existing language. And then second, that the proposed amendments are consistent with development code policies on purpose, and with the purpose statement for the base zone, special purpose district or development regulation where the amendment is proposed. So as of this afternoon at 3:00 PM, we received three letters of written testimony. Two of the letter writers oppose the proposed amendments, and one person supports the amendments. Now, in terms of the size of the accessory dwelling unit, as you know, the city has discretion concerning the size. This has been a bone of contention for a while, whether we had something that was 750 square feet, like it presently is in the code, or 900 square feet, like some members were interested in, or somewhere in between. That is something that council still has the discretion to decide. However, the state law prohibits cities from imposing owner occupancy and off-street parking requirements for accessory dwelling units. So because of that, that aspect is no longer discretionary. So the three decision types that can be made on this would be either the, to approve the proposed text amendments, approve them as modified, or deny the proposed text amendment request. That's all I have, did you have any questions?
Questions? I can't, I can't see Rich, in case Rich did. Just a second, I have to scroll through.
No, Mayor, I do not have any.
Okay, yeah, I'm trying to find you on the screen. All right. And then if anyone wishes to enter an exhibit into the record as part of your testimony, please briefly describe the exhibit, and then email it to cdaalbony.net. So at this time, we'll take testimony on the proposed amendments. We had one person that did sign up to want to testify, and that, that was Cameron Settlemeyer. Cameron, I'm pretty sure I think I saw you on there. Are you there, Cameron?
I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes. State your name and address also, thank you.
My name is Cameron Settlemeyer, I live at 2307 S. Avenue Southwest in the beautiful Hackman-Montis zoning district, and I ask that you vote no on DC-0320 as currently presented. On page three of Exhibit A, it says, "The staff report addresses proposed amendments that would be the minimum to comply with state law." That is not true. Albany Development Code 3.0804A and 5.07015A changes the minimum ADU size from 750 to 900 square feet. Increasing the allowable ADU size from 750 to 900 square feet is not required by state laws, a gift to investors looking to rampage through existing established neighborhoods for profit. An increase of ADU size from 750 to 900 square feet changes the equation from a granny flat or an in-law unit into a second house of at least two bedrooms. Combined with this effect, a property near the city center is increasingly desirable, and outside investors are going to be more than eager to buy existing single-family properties to turn into multifamily for profit. Then they flip and sell, and resell, and run. It will also allow out-of-state landlords to add ADUs to rental houses. They make their quick buck without ever caring how it will affect the neighborhoods, because it is not their neighborhood. Given the ever-rising price of bare land, this will become irresistible low-hanging fruit for investors. Comprehensive Plan Housing Goal 10, Policy 10 states, "Preserve and enhance Albany's historic housing as a unique and valuable resource." Comprehensive Plan Housing Goal 10, Policy 11 says, "Promote the conservation of existing housing by supporting programs that rehabilitate and upgrade substandard and deteriorating units." Comprehensive Plan Housing Goal 5, Open Spaces Scenic and Historic Areas and Natural Resources, says, "The goal is protect Albany's historic resources and utilize and enhance those resources for Albany residents and visitors." Under implementation message for Goal 5, item number eight says, "Develop review criteria which would discourage those zone changes resulting in increased pressure to replace historic structures with more intense land uses." Develop review criteria, zoning for the Hackman-Montis District says, "Is intended primarily to preserve the existing single-family residential character of the Hackman and Montis National Register Historic Districts. Conversion of single-family residential structures to other uses, including multifamily, is not allowed." Well, it wasn't. Yet allowing an ADU of 900 square feet rather than 750 square feet allows developers and investors to build a duplex or two houses on one lot, rather than just an in-law ADU. Once the safety check is removed, it allows outside investors to buy property, build an ADU, and sell, or if the property is distressed, tear down and build two houses instead, one being an ADU up to 900 square feet, and another even larger main house. It fundamentally changes the underlying zoning that will result in increased pressure to replace historic structures with more intense land uses, going directly against the comprehensive plan. Example scenario, an old home on a decent-sized lot needs restoration. If sitting in a single-family zone, before the code change, there is good odds that it would eventually be fixed up. But now an investor buys the house, tears it down, and builds two houses on the lot. One of the houses is a 900-square-foot ADU, the other is an even larger house. By the time you add garages and parking, there's not much left of the lot that looks like a single-family neighborhood. The investor sells, the realtor makes their buck from it being sold twice, and they both laugh all the way to the bank while the neighborhood is powerless to do anything about it, because it follows law, and there is nothing to challenge. And while the historic overlay district will partially help to protect some historic structures, it does nothing to protect structures outside of the overlay district, including many historic properties and structures that have never been surveyed. Comprehensive Plan Goal 10, Housing Policy 16, says, "Encourage the development of affordable housing in a range and types of appropriate sizes to meet Albany housing needs." But increasing the allowable ADU size from 750 to 900 has the opposite effect. Allowing a house-sized ADU instead of an ADU-sized ADU will discourage affordable ADUs from being built, but rather two upscale houses on a single lot, or the equivalent of duplexes. Despite the building and real estate lobbyists claiming that ADUs increase affordable housing, the opposite often happens. Why? Because they're beholden to the almighty dollar. When builders build, they build to maximize their dollar. How do you do that? By building as large as you can, and as high-end or as classy as you can. When bare land is available currently, do they build small entry-level homes? No, most new homes are above the price the average citizen can afford. Why? Maximizing profit. So why would a builder build an affordable ADU when they can build a classy one? What ends up happening is an existing home that would have been affordable to ease a buyer rent gets torn down. Two high-end homes are put in this place, one under the guise of being an ADU, and these are affordable, but both adversely affect a surrounding neighborhood. A neighborhood that was never planned or designed for such a change in density. Scenario B, an entry-level 1,800-square-foot house has come on the market. Before a young couple can get a bank loan for their first house, an investor swoops up the property with a cash offer. The investor builds a 900-square-foot addition, not including the garage, turning it into an upscale duplex. This removes an entry-level pass to home ownership, while increasing the profits of real estate mortals. This is not the affordable housing envisioned by ADUs. If you really care about affordable housing, you should use system development charges to penalize housing that is not affordable, and reward housing that is. This does not. Comprehensive Plan Transportation Goal 12, Policy 5, says, "Encourage development design that emphasizes safety and does not create unnecessary conflicts." Albany Development Code 1.020, Section 7, says, "Provide full review and approval of the relationship between land uses and traffic circulation in order to minimize congestion, with particular emphasis on not exceeding the planned capacity of residential streets." Allowing ADUs up to 900 square feet allows double the population density in developed neighborhoods, neighborhoods that were never designed for double the traffic and congestion. Where is the traffic study and review for the proposed development code change? These streets and the traffic patterns were never designed to support two houses per lot. Albany Development Code 1.0208 says, "Require that permitted uses and development designs provide reasonable protection from fire, flood, landslide, erosion, or other natural hazards." Albany's established residential neighborhoods were built with spacings to prevent the spread of fire, yet squeezing in 900-square-foot ADUs will abolish the safety space between previously built neighborhoods. It will make it much easier for fires to quickly spread from one parcel to the next from radiant heat. And on top of this, the lack of easy access for trucks and equipment to get to large accessory houses squeezed into oddball locations, often behind a primary house. And if that was not enough, there is address and location identification issues from taking an organized residential development pattern and throwing in additional houses willy-nilly. This could make quick emergency call locating difficult for both fire and medical emergencies. Another area not addressed is storm runoff from less landscaped areas. Albany Development Code 1.020, Section 9, says, "Protect and enhance the city's character and beauty." Albany Development Code 3.010 says, "Overviews, the residential zones are intended to preserve land for housing." This code preserves the character of neighborhoods by providing seven zones with different density standards. Yet by allowing ADUs to be a mass of 900 square feet, you are outright eliminating three of the seven zones, single-family zoning, gone. RS-10 Residential Single Family District, the RS-10 district is intended primarily for the lower-density single-family residential environment, gone. RS-6.5 Residential Single Family District, the RS-6.5 district is intended primarily for low-density urban single-family residential development, gone. Hackman-Montis District, the HM district is intended primarily to preserve the existing single-family residential character of the Hackman and Montis National Register Historic Districts. Conversions of single-family residential structures to other uses, including multifamily residential, is not allowed, gone. Allowing 900-square-foot ADUs, a two- or three-bedroom house, is a de facto elimination of all single-family zoning that will decimate the character of single-family neighborhoods, historic or not. It will allow outside developers to buy existing single-family homes in existing single-family neighborhoods, add an 900-square-foot ADU, then flip and resell. This is especially true, since real estate is increasingly considered as a trade commodity, with hedge funds and foreign investors increasingly getting into the market for profit, not to provide a place to call home. This will become irresistible low-hanging fruit for investors, and the character of Albany will be forever changed. Just look at what has happened to Portland. This will not only change the character of Albany's established neighborhood, it will also make the path to homeownership more difficult. For the reasons I just stated, it does not meet Albany Development Code 2.290. If you care about affordable housing, if you care about historic resources, as outlined in Goal 5 of the comprehensive plan, keep the size limit to 750 square feet. Without this change, you should vote no on DC-0320.
Okay, all right, very well said, Cameron, well done. And anything else?
That's it.
That, okay, all right, thank you. And I think also there was another letter submitted for the record from Dave Pinyard, was he going to read his, or was it just for written testimony? I haven't seen Dave come on, so...
His was just written.
Okay, all right, thank you, Cameron. Okay, was there anyone else that wanted to testify on, on this planning file DC-0320 over accessory dwelling units? I'm not seeing anybody. Okay. All right. Does any staff member wish to respond to any testimony presented? David? I gotta find you, there you are.
Yep, the one thing I wanted to respond to is in the written testimony submitted by David Pinyard. He indicated in the letter that there's no state mandate forcing the removal of the ownership occupation requirements, and that's unfortunately not true, it is a state mandate. But of the two points that he raises in his letter, the size is something that's still discretionary, but the fact that we can no longer regulate ownership occupation on ADUs.
Okay, all right. Does anyone have any procedural questions they would like to raise at this time? Okay. And with that, I declare the public hearing closed at 7:42 PM. And also wish to discuss this case, or ask questions of staff. And I, hang on, I gotta find where Rich went on my screen. Okay, there. Okay. Then if not, Council, I do think, I do believe you had some options there for some motions. And we also would need, the ordinance would be on page eight, if you want to have that read. Did, we already, where Sean at, did we already read this one? The first?
No.
Oh, okay, that was on the tree. Okay, so on page eight, would you like to read the ordinance, please?
Yes. An ordinance amending ordinance number 4441, which adopted the City of Albany Development Code by amending the Albany Development Code text and adopting findings.
Okay, so Council, you have, what would you like to do?
I move that we approve the, adopt the ordinance as, and to amend...
Order Mr. Johnson to move.
You have to read it, you have to move to...
Second reading.
Second time. What was that?
I'm up for a second reading.
Okay, to have the motion been read a second time and title only?
Yes.
Motion? Motion? Okay, is there a second?
I second that.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
I'm opposed.
Okay, all right. Okay, so the first reading's done, so the next meeting will come back for a second reading of that ordinance. Okay? All right, that, okay, thank you, folks. Let me grab my papers here. And I did see that Joel Orton came on, and Joel, we did, we did pass the, the motion was unanimous for the sale of the Pine Street property, in case Joel didn't know about that.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I've been following along, and I truly appreciate City Council's support on this.
Okay, great, thank you. We thank you for all your work you've done, too, so thank you. Okay, that is it on that item. Next page, then, counsel, is Business from the Public. And we did have one person that wanted to speak this evening, and I believe our name, Madeline McGregor. Are you still there? Yeah, right up on top. Okay, Madeline, so if you can state your name and spell your last name and furnish your address, please.
Sure, it's Madeline McGregor, 2743 Northwest Hillcrest Place, Albany, Oregon. And anything else? I'm gonna say good evening, Mayor Kenova. Thank you. Good evening, council members, and good evening, city staff. And before I get started with reading the formal statement that's been signed by 60 other of Albany's citizens and property owners, I'd like to explain a little bit of what motivated me to write the formal statement. "The City of Albany needs wise and respectful leadership, regardless of any elected member's term expiration. By seeking formal censure of one of your members, I am letting current and remaining elected officials or those seeking to be elected to the council know that Albany citizens care deeply and passionately about this community and are watching, are watching the governance of those we elect. Since the council represents a broad section of neighborhoods and businesses, when a councilperson injects their own personal bias and beliefs into meetings, that elected official is no longer governing. They are reacting and do more harm than good. You are elected to represent the diverse community in which you live and work, and your actions and behaviors have far-reaching consequences that affect both the livability and survival of our community. Before the meeting closes tonight, I request that council schedule time to discuss remedies for when a councilperson refuses to follow city policy as stated by their council handbook. Whether that's a discussion on issuing a censure or asking for immediate resignation or a public apology, the residents who have signed the following statement would like to know what the options are for disciplinary action." So I'm going to start now with the formal statement. "We respectfully submit this testimony and call for Albany City Council member Richard Kellum to immediately resign for conduct unbecoming to an elective representative of this city. If Mr. Kellum is unwilling to understand that he has lost the trust and respect of those whom he represents and persists in serving until the end of his term, we ask the mayor and members of the council request an immediate public apology from Mr. Kellum to those who have been hurt by his words and to issue a formal censure. We ask the council undertake a review and enter into the record a summation of the following acts unbecoming to an elected official, July 12, 2017. Following public commentary from members of the community, asking for the words diversity, equity, and inclusion to edit older language guiding the work of the Albany Human Relations Commission, councillor Kellum proceeds to cite examples of his tolerance using language that was in of itself offensive. Quote, "I once hired a woman because she said he was a lesbian," end quote. And continues that job, that the job interview ended with the conclusion that, quote, "I'm finding this out only because she was honest about her sexuality." He adds, "But I learned way more about lipstick lesbians than I ever wanted to." When the public in the audience gives an audibly shocked response, Mr. Kellum becomes argumentative and belligerent and doubles down on his stance. September 6, 2020, in a Corvallis Gazette Times article about the Albany Human Relations Commission, Mr. Kellum is quoted, "There are buzzwords that are out there now. They're used with some folks with great intention. They're also used by Black Lives Matter, who, some of them, beat you up if you voted for the wrong guy. What I object to is that there are some of these organizations that act this way, using that language specifically," end quote. In addition to his intimation regarding Black Lives Matter supporters as being violent, Mr. Kellum once again insults the LGBTQ+ community and in particular, those who identify as trans or non-binary. Quote, "I'm a guy who says there are exactly two sexes. If you have a question about that, drop your pants. And if you have an 'al' you're a guy, and if you have an 'any' you're a girl. That's a legitimate perspective. There are people that say if you don't believe as we do, you're racist or homophobic. I'm saying if you want a lot of diversity, let's have everything talked about," end quote. It would appear from his comments that Mr. Kellum is biased and has absolutely no place guiding the policies suggested by the Albany Human Relations Commission or nominating those who represent his diversity of thought to become members of its commission. September 23, 2020, during a meeting where council reviewed public commentary regarding the possible disbanding of the Albany Human Relations Commission, councillor Kellum erupted with threatening language towards a member of the community, a former HRC member who spoke about his feelings. Prior to his outburst, Mr. Kellum was not in attendance at the presentation given by Stephanie Newton, the HRC chair. He joined the meeting later during public business, where members of the community noted their dismay at the potential dismantling of the commission and the critical need for the HRC to reflect Albany's diverse community. During public commentary, Mr. Javier Cervantes, a former chair and member of the HRC for six years, reflected on the commission's controversial appointments and what felt like unequal treatment from council members when several members resigned at once. Mr. Cervantes noted that Mayor Kenova had sent him a letter and a certificate to thank him for his service, but that it had been deeply hurtful for him to hear during a council work session that other HRC members received direct phone calls and emails from the council. After statements by Mr. Cervantes concluded, Ms. Stephanie Newton answered a question from Ms. Matilda Novak, another member of the public. Following Ms. Newton's clarification, Mr. Kellum interrupted and stated that he was the council member that Mr. Cervantes referenced as having phone calls and conversations with other persons who had resigned. Quote, "I made a deal with him," Mr. Cervantes, "to bring in any policies developed by the HRC to the council before actions were made by the HRC," end quote. In response to Mr. Kellum's assertion, Mr. Cervantes stated that this was false. Mr. Kellum snapped, quote, "You're the one who made a deal and didn't follow through," end quote. Mr. Kellum continued to say that he did not telephone Mr. Cervantes as he had another member who had resigned with, quote, "I didn't thank you for your service because I didn't think you did a good job," end quote. At this point, Mr. Cervantes attempted to respond to Mr. Kellum's assertions that he was out of order for disagreeing with Mr. Kellum's statements. When councillor Kellum shouted, "No, you don't!" When Mr. Cervantes tried once again to respond by saying, "I have a right to speak back," Mr. Kellum actually said, and I quote, "Come on over to my place to defend it in person, sir." The added "sir" was nothing less than disrespectful in its intonation. For anyone following this exchange, it was apparent that Mr. Kellum was not only behaving in conduct unbecoming to an elected official, but that he had actually issued a threat to a member of the public. Being that this was not the first instance of Mr. Kellum speaking inappropriately to members of the community that he represents, it shows a pattern of discourteous and abhorrent behavior and a total lack of interest in actually acquitting himself with the duties of the office he holds. If you refer to the Albany City Council Manual, City Council Protocols, page 3, we believe that Mr. Kellum has exhibited flagrant violations of the protocols and responsibilities as an elected official. Respect. Council members agree to use respectful speech and positive body language when interacting with each other, staff, and the public, and will follow meeting procedures and protocols as established by the council. Civility. Council members agree to demonstrate civility in their professional interactions, both within and outside of the city organization. Comments during meetings will remain thoughtful and measured, avoiding exaggerated, provocative, or personal comments. Compromise. Open-mindedness and active listening will be practiced by council members during deliberations in an effort to pursue compromise whenever possible. Tolerance. Council members will endeavor to respectfully agree to disagree in the event compromise is not possible. Mr. Kellum has not adhered to the above protocols from his own city council handbook and continues to exhibit an attitude that shows disinterest in practicing skills from council governance workshops. He has insulted members of the community on more than one occasion, exhibits a total lack of interest with non-attendance or body language, threatens members of the public with violence, and does not practice active listening skills or mature and wise responses to those he disagrees with. In fact, we would say that he seems to openly violate any council protocol set by the city. Because Mr. Kellum receives a stipend from the city, he therefore should be held to a higher standard than if he were a member of the community upset with actions by the council or its commissions. Those of us who have witnessed Mr. Kellum's unbecoming and insulting behavior have had enough. We, the underside, request the Albany City Council and Mr. Kellum unworthy of serving. And I will read these names into the record. There are 60 names. They are all Albany residents or property owners. There were two that were property owners and that have interests in making sure that their tenants are safe. Josephine Fleetwood, Jody Yoder, Cameron Settlemeyer, Carleen McDowell, Heather Maraja, Bernadette Neiderer, Kirsten Studley, Jessica Lynn Graham, Baron C. Leeder, Linda Hurd, Christina Resinow, Connie Jenkins, Amanda Dant, Bridget Trowell, Jackie Montague, Rebecca Roth, Carolyn Phillips, Shirley Caleb Stockton-Kickner, Lorraine Sorensen, Daniel Butler, Melody Swobert, Denise Bigner, Greg Ivors, Karen Kaiser, Amanda Mandell, Susan A. Leonard, Suzanne Phillips, Leah Hillier, Mary Yadley, Jennifer Beaumont, Keith Colquhoun, Jared Taylor, Robin Van Rossmann, Mark A. Leonard, Alicia Booblets, Eric Rao, Willard Sheppi, Matt Hamel, Philip Roy Resinow, Renee Miller, Thomas Stewart Ashley Jr., Jamie Hevlin, Deanna Grant, Megan Robledo, Maria Betram, Amy Lucas, Tisha Jacobson, Melanie Kay, Darren Hablock, Stacy Morris, Victoria Nicky, Deborah Ark, Judy Sanders, Kate Foster, Nicole Ballinger, Dr. Stephen Ballinger, Tamara Seber, Sarah Richardson, Melissa Murphy, and Anna C.W. Thompson. Thank you.
Okay, is that it? Madeline?
That is it, and I can send that over to the city clerk, if you'd like.
Yep, I was gonna ask you if you could, because she's gonna need all of the names for the record, so. Reading them off quick, I don't, I don't think Allison was able to type that fast, but yeah, that'd be great. And then, and then if the council wants to discuss any of this, that would have to be under Business from the Council. From that. Okay, all right, thank you. And then I do, I think there was another person that had signed up, but I'm not definite the way that signup sheet was, but was Josephine Fleetwood? Would she want to present?
I'm here.
Public. Oh, there you are. Okay, Josephine, where do you want to talk?
Yes, it was just a follow-up to Madeline's statement was that, can you, I understand it's gonna go to business with council, but can you explain to us, the public that are watching this, the procedures and the processes for discipline when an elected official repeatedly ignores the rules of conduct?
Okay, Josephine, first of all, for the record, can you state your name, spell it, and then furnish your address?
Josephine Fleetwood, J.O.S.E.F.I.N.E.F.L.E.E.T.W.O.O.D., 2736 Ambleside Street, Northwest Albany, Oregon.
Okay, thank you. So the process is when it comes to an item coming forward to the council from Business from the, Business from the Public, is since we have other agenda items, and usually if the council wants to bring it up this evening to discuss, then that would have to come from Business from the Council. But it's totally up to the council what they would like to do with the item that was brought forward. When it comes to, say, violating the protocols that were stated, that isn't a document that the city council all agreed upon. It was a facilitated meeting that sets some protocols and conduct for the council to follow, kind of like a guiding document. There is no teeth in it. It's not like that, you know, everyone agreed upon it in a new council on. It's just showing them, this is, this is how we want our council meetings to be conducted. And, and this is, and mostly to be in a respectful manner, too. But there's no, there's no teeth to any of that. When it comes to council members, they're only, they're only, their boss is not any other counselors. We're not each other's boss. The voters are our boss. So the voters are the ones that elect everybody into office or can remove somebody from office. But I cannot, as mayor, cannot tell any counselor what they should be doing, and the counselors, it's the same thing towards me or any other counselor. So everyone's elected, and that's sort of the process for all elected officials. But we stress to have everybody, and we try to keep our environment here with the city council. We want it in a respectful manner, and that comes from everyone. You know, we want the public to be respectful, and we want our city council to be respectful. But when it comes to, say, violating what those protocols are, there is no enforcement tool that we have on that. So, does that help, Josephine? Answer your question.
So will we get a reply or any other information?
So you're welcome to stay on to the council meeting if the council brings this up from Business from the Council, and you could be able to hear the discussion. If they weren't wanting to or wanted to set it up for another meeting, the council's the one that has the, they're the ones that provide direction for that.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right. Thank you, Josephine. Anybody else that wanted to speak under business from the public? Okay, I'm not seeing anybody. Okay, all right. Thank you, folks. Our next item is, this is a second reading of the ordinance, and this is over our Development Code Amendment package. This ordinance is on page eighty-one. And David, since the ADU ordinance was not adopted tonight, are you still, are you wanting them all done at the same time, or does that make a difference?
It doesn't make a difference. If you pass the ordinance tonight for DCO2-20, the language wouldn't take effect until January 1st of 2021. So they're exclusive from each other.
Okay. All right, so. So yeah, Dick?
So is this the first reading of a modified ordinance, or is this the second reading that we had, whatever, how many months ago it was?
Yeah, David?
Reading of a modified ordinance?
So this, this ordinance here is the one that was first read on September 23rd. And because it didn't receive unanimous vote to have the second reading that night, the second reading took place two weeks from then, or tonight, actually.
Remember, Dick, you had voted no for the second.
Yeah.
So this would be the second reading for it.
I thought you were saying that that this was changed because of the other ordinance. But if this is a second reading, that's fine.
Okay, all right. Sean, would you like to do the second reading? Is Sean on?
Turn your microphones off. Ah ha. Yeah. Okay. An ordinance amending ordinance number 4441, which adopted the City of Albany Development Code by amending the Albany Development Code text and adopting findings.
Move to approve. Second.
All right, motion's been made in a second. Is there any discussion on this ordinance? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
I'm opposed. I think this is too strong arm on the public. And I know I'm a minority of one there, but I'm voting no.
All right. So motion carried, four to one. So, okay, next is adoption of the ordinance. This has already had a first and a second reading on it. This one's on page eighty-three. This is over the tree regulations.
Move to approve.
Okay, and any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
I'm voting no on this one also.
Okay. All right, motion carried, four to one. Okay, that's it on the ordinances, and next is a ward of contracts. This is a special procurement of a geographic information system software, and I think Sean Park, or you bring that item up, or Jorge, or?
Oh, good evening, Mayor and councillors. I'll go ahead and start, and then if there's any detailed questions, we can probably update. Tonight I plan to share, I have three items. The first one is the GIS, and it covers three procurement costs. Please take notes, because it will be at the end. I want to make sure that you understood these procurement clauses. The first one is ESRI is a company, stands for Environmental System Research Institute, and has about approximately forty-three percent of the market share in the GIS software market worldwide. That is more than any other vendor in this space. The City of Albany has maintained a relationship with ESRI for decades, and our systems are integrated with other enterprise systems such as Cartograph that is used in public works for their utility infrastructure maintenance. It's also integrated with AutoCAD for public works engineering, in SLA with building and community development, and now it's going to be integrated with Munis for utility billing. Our contract with ESRI is valid until November 7th, 2020. We receive a quote for enterprise agreement with ESRI for fifty thousand dollars per year for three years. Dave Decovas, which is here with me, negotiated the cost down for about, it was about fifty-five thousand dollars a year, which it's actually related now to the number of citizens that we have. So the original cost for this contract was fifty-five thousand, and Dave was able to negotiate it down to fifty thousand dollars per year. Staff recommends that city council acting as a local contract review board adopt the resolution and authorize the IGA director to negotiate an award agreement with, for GIS software support and train services with ESRI. If you have any questions, we're opening for questions now.
Okay, questions?
No, I'm just scratching my nose.
Look, it makes sense to me.
Yeah. So Jorge, I was curious though, when, because we handle, we provide the GIS for Millersburg too, don't we?
We normally cover the flight over and the data that resides in our system, but we don't provide GIS service, like we provide GIS services to city staff here at City of Albany. We partner with them for the contract to do flyover and gather the data.
Okay, so when you get on our Info Hub, and then it shows, just like ours, all the properties for Albany, you can do the same thing for Millersburg. So is Millersburg paying us for that service?
Hi, Jorge, this is Chris. I can try.
Yep.
Hi, Mayor. So we do have an IGA with Millersburg for their, some of their data that we host. Well, we have an, we have three IGAs with them for stormwater, wastewater, and sanitary sewer maintenance. And within those IGAs are the administrative costs for the CMMS system, which is, uses the GIS. So in a roundabout way, yes, they are paying us for the work that we do in hosting their GIS data.
So then it, so upgrading this with this, for this new software, that gonna be included? Because there'll be recipients of this upgrade?
Yeah, so yeah, Mayor, the way that will happen is that Jorge will charge public works more for GIS services, and then our increased costs will go into our quarterly billings for Millersburg, so that's, it trickles down.
Okay, good. So, thank you. Okay, any questions? Of Jorge? If not, you have a resolution on page ninety-two.
Move to approve. Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay. Motion carried. And I'm losing councillors on the screen. Oh, there. Okay, all right. Next is the HVAC software control system. And who's gonna lead on that one?
Yes, Mayor, I'll take the, I'll start with that. We have, the HVAC software control system is a sole source procurement process that we're gonna be following here. The HVAC control system at City Hall was purchased as part of the original HVAC installation back in 2006. The control system monitors heating and air conditioning for the building. The current system needs an upgrade, and it's getting harder to find parts as well as contracted services. Should the current software controls fail, it could be both costly and may take a significant amount of time to repair. A system failure during the peak of the winter or summer months could result in a challenging work environment for the employees and the residents that seek services here at City Hall. Currently, the Energy Trust of Oregon has offered additional incentives to help make energy efficiency upgrade more affordable to government and commercial businesses by lowering the upfront cost. Train of Oregon sent a representative to inspect the city's current HVAC systems controls. The recommendation was to upgrade the existing Tracer Summit VCU at City Hall to the Train Tracer SC Plus Building Automation System. The total cost of this software package is forty-one thousand four hundred and seven. A train will reduce the cost of the controls by the amount of dollars that are part of the incentives, which is about thirty-four thousand five hundred and sixteen dollars, resulting in a net balance for this software control system upgrade of a little bit over sixty-eight hundred dollars for the City of Albany. Staff recommends that city council acting as a local contract review board adopt the attached resolution and authorize the deputy city manager to negotiate a word and execute a sole source contract with Train of Oregon in Portland, Oregon.
That it, Jorge?
That's it for the software control systems.
Okay, Mike?
Is there any, any, you're upgrading the software. Is any of the hardware being upgraded also at the same time?
Hello. This is Rosie Welch with Train. I'm on the controls team, so I can speak to that. Yes, the software and the hardware will be updated, so the main control panel will receive a new controller as well as the controller that is for the boiler plant system, so that will be upgraded as well. But as far as the controls on the VAV equipment or other unitary or terminal units, those will not be upgraded. So the main front-end hardware, yes, and the software.
Okay, Mike?
Why isn't the VAV terminal unit hardware being upgraded at the same time?
Well, as a part of our usual upgrade process, to keep that original investment, those controllers are still operating fine, so they can remain in place as well as all of the communication wiring that is there. But the communication protocol that the system is speaking will be upgraded to the industry standard of backnet. So if, when those controllers do fail, they will be ready to be replaced with today's standard of communication protocol, but they are good to remain for now.
Are they still readily available?
So we are not manufacturing those controllers anymore for the VAV boxes. So it is what is in stock. We have not run out yet, but that is something to definitely keep in mind as, as those VAV box controllers start to fail, they will need to be replaced with an upgraded backnet controller.
Okay, so how many VAV boxes do we have? How many unitary controllers do we have?
If I remember correctly, there are forty VAV boxes, approximately.
What's the average cost of a unitary controller per box?
For the material or for replacement, full labor?
For the replacement of those boxes, since they're no longer, no longer being manufactured, we're relying on, on current inventory, and we have forty of these unitary devices, my, my question is, 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 so we're kind of gambling with the fact that these terminal unit controllers stay in effect. So say I lose two or three of them, what's your replacement cost for one of them?
So a new wire will need to be ran if you do them one at a time, so the, the first cost would be more expensive. And the reason that this was not part of the upgrade project is because it is a lot more costly to go to each of those VAV boxes unit by unit, and that didn't seem to be something that those that we spoke with at city council would be, would have the budget or the money for, especially considering that the incentive dollars at now, right now, we're covering eighty-six percent of the project. So a wireless option would probably be best so that those boxes could be, the controllers could be replaced as a fix-on fail. But as far as cost for each box, I would say between two to three thousand, but to put in the initial, to replace the initial controller as the, the language, the communication would need to be replaced would be much higher than that, just because that, that install cost of running the wire or the wireless system will be more expensive for the first VAV box that needs to be replaced, the controller.
So we never got a price, we never got a cost for that, for that upgrade then?
No, as our, our standard for when we're doing the upgrade is to replace the main controller, as that is what's most important, because if that goes down, the whole system goes down, right? So replacing that is, is what's most important, and that is the hardware that is being, that is being replaced. So as far as those VAV boxes goes, that can be something to plan for, but it's not a part of this upgrade proposal, as I said, is just talking with those that I did at the City Hall. That didn't seem to be something they were interested in scope-wise.
Okay, I don't, I don't, I don't like it for the fact that we're relying on something that is no longer in manufacture, is no longer available, and then when they're gone, we're gonna be forced into this, and I don't understand why we didn't look at the total, total package to replace the whole thing, and, and since we have the money now, it doesn't mean that we're gonna have the money two or three years ago when we started losing controllers. I just don't like it. That's it.
Is, one of the things, when we started to look into the controllers upgrade, we were kind of, we didn't have all the funds to actually move forward with this. We were actually thinking about not doing it. The reason we moved forward with this was because the incentives that were available, and the total cost of the city is under seven thousand dollars. If we would have upgraded these boxes, we didn't have the funds to do that. So that's why we decided to mitigate the highest risk at the time. And then later on, we found out that we can actually use CARES dollar for the second part that I'll be speaking about, the replacement of the HVAC.
Can we use CARES dollars for the upgrade of the software? Or the, the hardware on the VAVs?
We could investigate that piece, but it was not part of the, the process we were following. We, we were not aware that we could use CARES dollars when we started this initial process for the controllers upgrade.
Okay. I just think we gotta look into it. I really do.
Go ahead, Alex.
So, so my background's in maintenance, you know, repairing things, fixing things, and other than Navy. So my question is, is the parts are no longer in, with the VAV, what does that stand for, Mike?
Variable air volume. It's one of the terminal units out in the, out in the system.
So what's the useful working life of one of those devices?
Well, they're no longer in manufacture.
That's what I'm saying. So I wanna know how many we have. If we have forty or so in our building in City Hall, then we need to know there's at least one or two units per that may need to be replaced, or would you have, we do the whole system? So my question is, how long do one of these things supposed to last at their current usage rate?
I don't think you can answer that question.
I can jump in. This is Tom Baxter with Train. We've had these systems in place for thirty-five years with the tracer system. The, the main brain, which we're talking about, the building control unit, that Rosie was saying we're gonna replace with a new brain with more features, ease of use, as well as stability, modern, modern technology. Those, those tend, they're computer running twenty-four seven. We know our desktops or laptops, we replace those every four or five years, because they, they just don't meet our needs anymore. The VAV controllers, we've seen those run twenty, thirty years. They don't do a whole bunch. They're kind of just passing electrons back and forth.
We were switched.
The actuators on the VAV boxes that make things move, those do tend to wear. VAV controllers, they don't tend to go out. The other reason that we didn't propose it is because they all seem to be working. And if we, if we were just to go in and wholesale replace a bunch of stuff that's working, and doesn't seem like, we'd be happy to do it, of course, because we love to sell.
I agree. So is there, is there a maintenance schedule or preventative maintenance schedule on these devices or the inspections?
On the VAV boxes themselves, there's not a physical maintenance necessarily. On the dampers, certainly you can go set, check set screws, but really the, the best way to check and make sure a VAV box is working is to sit at the operator terminal that Tom Valentino is in charge of in his group, and make sure they're, they're still working and exercise them, show that they're increasing and decreasing airflow, you know, changing temperature.
All right, thank you.
So it's easy to tell whether they So it's easy to tell whether they work, and if you lose one, there's not a big exposure compared to what Jorge was saying, if you lose that main building controller, you're kind of down, you're, you're running in the state that it was in, so if you lose one, we can readily replace it with a, another controller that's a wireless, modern one on the backnet, the common protocol. The other thing we can do is if, if you start to lose a few of them, we could look at replacing a, a string of them, so then you have some spares. So if you lose one down the line, you can swap out the, the old one, it's just, there's a lot of options, but the main thing is getting that big brain replaced. And then, you know, like Rosie said, if you want to just take advantage of the investment you made in the, the wiring and the controllers you already have, you can keep on rolling with fairly little exposure. Obviously, if it's the mayor's office that goes down, then we're in trouble, but other than that, it, you know, it's, it's not a huge exposure. We have a downtime of a couple of days, and then we can get back up and running. And even then, you can fix a damper in place, it's just not a, not a huge deal.
Thank you very much for the explanation, I appreciate it.
Okay, Rich?
Yes, um, you said you had some of the old controllers still available on the shelf. If these things last twenty, fifteen, twenty years, what's the cost of the old stuff on the shelf to have three or four of them? If, you know, how many we lost in how many years? I mean, that might take care of our needs for another twenty or thirty years, depending on, you know, I mean, if you just have a few, have a few of the spares.
And we can look into that with, with Train in terms of purchasing a couple of spare units and keep them in the house here, if that would help the council feel more comfortable with this.
You don't have, you don't have the risk then? You have some time, if you have one or two of them go out, you got one or two that you can replace.
Right.
All right, Dale?
I, I think Rich is on to something, you know, when they said it's a fifteen to twenty year life, and it was put in in two thousand and six, is that right, Jorge?
That is correct, yes, sir.
Yeah, so they're fourteen years already, so who knows, they could start fail onesy twosy, you could have mass failures, but you know, I don't think that it's a bad idea at all to put half a dozen in, in stock in our spare parts, and it gets you further on down the line, I mean, if it sounds like to replace them all, it'd be a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, so I think Rich is on something.
Okay, any other questions of staff? Okay, what would you like to do then with this item, there's a resolution on page ninety six?
Move to approve.
Move to?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made in a second, any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? All right, okay, motion carried. Thank you, and the next is another HVAC system, this is for purchase installation of an HVAC system replacement.
That's Greg Mayor. This one is, the third item is a cooperative procurement, and this is for replacement of the HVAC system units at city hall. The current Train HVAC control system at city hall was purchased as part of the original HVAC system in nineteen ninety six, when the building was put in place. City facility maintenance staff and Train representatives conducted a complete inspection of the existing systems and found a replacement was needed. The HVAC replacement recommendations from Train included two Intellipack rooftop units, a catalytic air cleaner, a four inch Merv thirteen filters to provide air filtration efficiencies at city hall. Diane Merzinski conducted a market research and found a formal competitive request for proposals for HVAC products, installation and services that was issued by Hartford, Hartford County School District in Maryland. The cost proposed, proposal submitted by Train includes the purchase of HVAC equipment installation of, of the top, the rooftop units, removal of the existing HVAC system and related services at a project cost of a little bit over four hundred and ten thousand dollars. The new HVAC system will be compatible with the proposed acquisition, acquisition of the Train software control units that we just talked about. The Energy Trust of Oregon is offering substantial energy cost incentives with the purchase of the Train controls. CARES Act funding is also available to offset the cost of the purchase made, made and completed before December thirty first. That would assist the city to provide citizens, staff a clean and safe public environment to work and conduct a public business. The equipment upgraded are expected to deliver long term energy savings, reduce operating costs, and improve employee and customer comfort. Use of cooperative, of the cooperative procurement will provide the city both cost and time savings. The total cost of the HVAC replacement unit that I just described is a little bit over four hundred and ten thousand dollars, and will be paid from the equipment replacements, our equipment replacement and the federal CARES Act reimbursement funds. Staff recommends the city council acting as a local contract review board, approved by resolution and exemption from the competitive bidding process, and authorize the parts and recreation director to enter into contract to purchase an HVAC system replacement through Train Oregon using an existing interstate cooperative contract. I would also like to acknowledge Tom Valentino, Diane Merzinski, the vendor, they have worked very hard in coming together and being able to provide this information and recommendation, so we can take advantage of the CARES Act funds for this project.
Okay, questions? Mike?
Here we go again. Just a question, can we get an, what, what's the cost of an extended parts and labor warranty on the Intellipacks? Say for five years after the first one year standard warranty?
Yeah, so I took the time to look that up, since we had a little bit of time, and you mentioned that at the beginning. So I, I'm just going to rattle these off, I've got them down on paper, I could probably do a share screen, or I can read them, whatever you guys prefer. Do I just read them?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead and read them.
Okay, so the, the base bid, the base bid is one year parts and labor. You can add a second year parts warranty for fourteen twenty seven. You could add second year labor for four thousand five hundred eighty seven. And then if we look at a five year, and this is five year, wouldn't, it's not, it's separate from the second year, so total here for parts would be forty eight oh nine, and for labor, it would be fifteen thousand seven hundred and fifty. So you can see that the parts warranties are pretty inexpensive, once you go for the labor, it adds up in a hurry.
Jorge, do we have that in the, do we have the money to do some kind of an extended warranty, or not?
We have been saving for the HVAC system, and we're going to be using, we're going to try to use some of that money, we have to use some of that money to be able to package it together with the CARES Act money. But if we're talking about nineteen thousand dollars for five years, is that where you said, David, nineteen, kind of?
If you, if you add the parts and the labor together, it would be, well, it'd be close to twenty thousand when you have them together.
Yeah, close to twenty thousand. Uh, we, we have about a hundred and thirty two thousand that we're applying to this project, and, and we have another, I believe sixty to eighty thousand dollars that are left if the CARES Act covers the rest. If, there is a, a risk that we take if they don't cover everything, to go ahead and allocate these additional dollars, but if they do cover everything, we can actually come later and come back to the council and, and try to get this contract with the extended warranty.
I believe we can add the, the extended warranty before the first year warranty is up, isn't that not correct?
It, it needs to be added before the equipment ships from the factory. Once, once the equipment's on site, it's more complicated to add it, you, you can still add it, the cost goes up a little less more complicated. We, we generally like to see it added before it ships.
Well, it's just something I'd like to consider, because in the long run, I've seen that it saves money, especially with the labor in the, in the parts, it saves money. But if we don't, if we don't have the money, I, I guess there's nothing that we can do about it, so, thank you.
Let me propose, all right, Peter, but let me propose that if the council is opening to, open to approving the number that we have here, the four hundred and ten thousand dollars, with the option to purchase the five year extended agreement, if we have the funds, if you approve both of them together, then if we have the funds, we'll go ahead and update, update the contract to include that.
I like that.
I like that.
Okay, Dale, did you want to say anything? And then, and Peter, did you want to, Peter?
Well, it was just more or less the same thing that Jorge just said, there are restrictions on how we can use our CARES Act dollars, but one of them is that if we had budgeted money for this project, we can't use that money. But if part of that, that budgeted savings is for the warranty, then, you know, that, that, that's, that gets it off the table, so what Jorge and I need to do is look at that and just make sure that that's doable. In the meantime, the council could look at the whole project cost and approve that if, if, if they would like to do that.
Okay, Dale?
Yeah, Jorge, on the, I'm just looking at the agenda on my other computer, I think we all have two or three devices going. On the software, you indicated that a good chunk of it's going to be paid by the Energy Trust of Oregon, and you gave us that breakdown. On, on this equipment, the hardware, you mentioned four hundred and ten thousand, some from, from equipment replacement and some from the federal CARES Act. I'm just looking for a breakdown, how much of it's coming from the federal CARES Act?
Yeah, so in order to be able to utilize these CARES Act fund, you, you have to use whatever you had budgeted, I believe by the end of the last fiscal year, and what we had budgeted for HVAC was about around a hundred and thirty two thousand. So the breakdown would be a hundred and thirty two thousand from equipment replacement, and the rest, we're going to try to allocate to the CARES Act.
That's a good chunk from there, man.
Good, that's a good, all right, thank you.
Good.
Okay, all right, any other questions? Oh, Rich? Yep?
Yes, if we're using a bid from Tuscaloosa or whatsoever, who is the contractor putting the stuff in?
Can you repeat the last part?
Who is the contractor? Who is putting the stuff in, if this is a, an out of state bid?
Train of Oregon.
Train of Oregon is going to be doing it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Yeah, Dale?
Yeah, I think, Rich, I think what it is, is a purchase in agreement like
Right.
Somebody else, competitive process, but, but local company take advantage of that, I know we were involved in a couple of them. So, yeah, local people.
Yes.
Okay, all right, council, there's a resolution on page one hundred, what would you like to do with this item?
Move to approve.
I'll second that.
Mayor, before, the resolution we have is for the four hundred and ten thousand, and I believe that Councilor Sykes wanted to include the warranty, so it will be the four, the four hundred and ten thousand plus another twenty thousand for the extended warranty.
Correct.
Yes.
All right. Any more discussion?
The mo- So the motion is, is to approve of the resolution, plus adding in the maintenance portion of it, correct?
The five year extended warranty.
Yeah.
For the extended warranty, yeah, I'm, correct, correct the word, okay.
Okay. All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carried, all right. Thank Jorge, and thank you folks from Train, so, thank you. Next is adoption of the consent calendar, if there's any items that need to be pulled off this evening, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, consent calendars is approved, and next would be a staff report. And this is for public services, the rates, services updates for twenty twenty one, and I believe I saw Julie. She's still on, there she is, okay, Julie?
I don't know if, if you've had time to look at the report, or if you want staff to go over, but I can tell you that I'm really happy to be here tonight to give you the good news that we're not asking for a rate modification for twenty twenty, so the rates will remain the same in twenty, or excuse me, in twenty twenty one as in twenty twenty. We are eligible for a point three percent increase, and while that sounds really tiny, it amounts to more money than you think, but we don't think it's a good year to do that. And so that was the decision that we made. I think that's good news for Albany residents. I did include some other things on that document, however. One of them is something that came to me from a customer, and she said, you have a ninety gallon cart available and a thirty two gallon cart available, but nothing in between. And in other jurisdictions, we do have a sixty or sixty five gallon cart available. And so, and I'm going to be looking at my report, not looking at you, but so in other jurisdictions, we can do that. And so I talked to Peter about it, and we decided that that would be a good rate to add to the rate sheet. I, I don't see a lot of hesitation on your part, unless I'm really wrong about that, so we've gone ahead and ordered those carts for the first of the year. So you can see that I'm showing you, a thirty two gallon cart is currently twenty dollars and fifty six.
I think you're right, Julie. Or somebody's interfering.
Huh, how about now?
Yeah.
It says it's Alan. What?
Can you hear?
Yes, talking.
No, you can't hear me?
Yeah, okay, now we can.
Okay, I'll try to do this without looking, maybe I need to just stay on this screen. Um, so, and then we have a rate for a ninety gallon cart, so we're asking you to add that rate to the rate sheet for a sixty gallon cart, so that customers can start asking for that. A really important reason to add that is the next ask. And you'll see that we are asking to add a fifteen dollar contamination fee to both the recycle cart and the yard debris cart. And the reason for this is sort of shown below. We're dealing with what is really a new norm. People are, there are many more people at home, and they are making thirty to forty percent more trash at home. We don't really have a mechanism to charge them more for that unless they put extra bags, most people just pile it up, or some people just throw it in their recycle cart or their yard debris cart. And so contamination has become a big problem. And this suggestion actually came from our recycle and yard debris drivers, because they were seeing so many plastic bags full of trash in the hopper camera that they have on the truck going in. So what, it's not just Albany, it's all of our jurisdictions, and what we're asking is to add that fifteen dollar contamination fee. The first time a driver notices that, he would note his route sheet, his or her route sheet, and that would go back to one of our operations clerks who would send out a postcard that tells them, your recycle cart was contaminated with a plastic bag full of, we don't know, we're not going to open it, but no plastic bags are allowed in recycle or yard debris, and likely it's trash. And so, the, this is your courtesy reminder to put material into the correct carts, and the next time, you will be charged this fee. So everybody gets a reminder first. And I, I feel like that's more than fair, and I think that if we don't do something to encourage people, we'll be looking at higher costs for everyone, even the people who are trying to do things correctly. So those are the asks this year, and I just, you know, would like to hear your comments on that, how you feel about that.
I think that sounds great, so I mean, that's, that's just perfect, I mean, it's a lot of times what we do on a lot of our city programs, is you just give them a warning at first, and if they're not going to comply, then it's going to cost them, so I think that's great, Julie, and then also doing the, the sixty five gallon cart. I think that's, that's wonderful solution for folks. Are you going to need this back to us in a resolution form? Will we be back on a resolution to adopt, or can you just go ahead and implement the changes if the council agrees with it?
I think we would need a resolution because we're adding rates to the approved rate sheet.
Okay.
We will make it official, and we wouldn't be implementing it until We will make it official, and we wouldn't be implementing it until January 1st. Although as we get into December, we may be sending out some of those postcards. We have a postcard that has lots of checkboxes to tell, to try to explain it to people. And it also says on that postcard that if you, because of new circumstances, if you need a larger cart, give us a call. Here are the sizes available. Last year, I know I shared with you a document that we sent to all customers. We called it a waste guide, and it is new and improved this year because I have staff this year to help and to get that done, and he's awesome. So that will be coming out again, and again, that will list the different cart sizes available. So we're trying to let people know, you can, you can upsize, but we think there'll be a lot of people who have a 90 who couldn't add it with a 32, but who can downsize as well. So it's probably a push, would be my guess.
Okay.
And can I say when we're getting that, that waste guide that's coming out? We just got approved for some Spanish-speaking versions so that we can try to help get it out to more people in Albany and really all over the valley.
Oh, that's wonderful. That's great, yeah. Okay, so, do you have questions of Julie? In other words, we can have a resolution back to you at the next council meeting. Is everyone okay with that?
I, I think it was great, Julie, thank you.
Yeah, okay, we'll have that at the next council meeting then, Julie.
I have a question.
Okay, yeah, Rich?
Yes, this is just on service. We had, you know, it used to be you could have people have the truck stop and pick up stuff alongside, and I understand you're not doing that anymore?
We are. There's a fee on the rate sheet for extra bags.
Well, this would be like a, a chair or something.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that is, there's a supplemental rate sheet, and we, about three or four years ago, we simplified that. So instead of a chair or a couch or a love seat or a table, it just says furniture. But it is on the rate sheet as well, and I can forward that to you if you'd like to see it.
Would you please?
Yeah, I'll get that done.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, any other questions?
Thank you.
Julie?
I do.
Right?
Mayor?
Oh, yeah, Dick?
I'd like to put in a pitch for furniture chair if it's usable stuff rather than going to the dump.
Do call in things and say, hey, if you want to call furniture chair, we can leave it and go back around again. So I couldn't agree more, and Dick, that's one of the messages in this new waste guide to help encourage people to reuse if they can. If it's something you don't need, but somebody else could. Look for places to reuse.
They even took an old-fashioned, gigantic TV, bulb kind of TV from me, so.
They can do that still.
Yeah, they took.
Dick, I talked to him. I talked to him, Dick, and, and they don't, they didn't want to have, one, the mattress that was used, and the second thing, the dog had taken over the couch, and so I wouldn't want to give that to somebody.
Well, we appreciate that, Rich.
Yeah, yeah, they do have to be a little particular nowadays because there's a lot of places that have bedbug infestations, so.
In the early stages of COVID, we suspended that, and now we're back.
Yeah, mm-hmm, okay, great, Julie. Okay, and last item then would be reclassification of the Aquatics Program Coordinator position. And that would be Kim. Hello, Kim, again.
Hello, so I am here requesting an approval of the reclassification of two full-time aquatics program coordinator positions as their responsibilities have been revised and increased. So due to our current budget situation, we, I've decided not to backfill the Recreation Aquatics Supervisor position that was vacated by Rob Romancier back in March. So as a result, I will be taking on the direct supervisor duties of the aquatics program. But our two aquatics program coordinators are stepping up and taking on some additional tasks. So we want to make sure they're being compensated for their additional work. So as a result, we are, we've worked with HR, they've done a review of scope of duty. And so we're requesting that their salary grade be adjusted from A126 to A131, and that upon your approval, the reclassification will be effective back to July 1, because that's when operations were starting to pick back up to our new normal after our COVID closure. So the total budget impact is going to be about $5,600, but when you take into account the amount we're saving by not filling an entire position, this is helping to, to keep our budget in line.
Okay, all right, council, okay with that?
I am.
Okay. All right, and would you like to have a motion on that? You need some action to approve this classification?
I'm going to approve, Mayor.
Second.
Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Okay, motion carried. Thank you, Kim.
Thank you, Kim.
All right, last page, business from the council, and on the top, but the list here is Dick. Do you have anything?
No, I'm fine.
Okay, Mike?
I don't have anything.
Okay, Bill? Nope, Alex?
For me, it's a public safety issue. I'm seeing we're getting darker, people are not turning on their lights, or they don't have their lights set on automatic, and I drive a silver car. So in the morning and at dusk, my car vanishes. And so there's a lot of silver cars or light colored cars here in town. We need to get some messaging out about turning on your lights during those hours because I've seen people run up on the back of another car because they didn't see that cart coming out of the fog or, or it's just too dark. And so, and there's been accidents around town. One of my clients was in an accident, and the person that hit her had a silver car. Well, she had a silver car, and the person hit her, and she had her lights on. So people need to slow down with the wet weather, and I'll turn her, turn her lights on.
Okay, all right, thank you. And Rich? You didn't have anything? Okay. And, let's see, and the only thing that I had this evening is there actually started to be the League of Oregon Cities Conference all day today, so it's been a long day sitting here online. And then we have it all tomorrow, too. So there were some great speakers today on, on racial and diversity, and it was very interesting. And also, there was a legal counsel talking about the League of Oregon gives a protest. I don't know if, Sean, if, did you sign up at all for any of the League of Oregon Cities?
No, I did not this year. Being on the, being it's virtual, I did not sign up. I'm here, there I am. So, I missed it.
Okay, so the one was, actually, they had it videotaped, so I think, I think it's able to access and get the online version because they had PowerPoints on it. So.
Yeah.
Pressing on it.
Great.
Yeah, so. And with that, seeing some of the folks still staying on. And so if, as I said, it was up to the council, if they wanted to discuss at all about the concern that was brought up. I mean, I do want to, on behalf of the council, I do want to apologize, you know, for the behavior, word stated. I know things do get very contentious at times, and so I do want to, on behalf of the city, apologize for any, for words that were spoken. So we clearly want to be a community that's very respectful of everyone, and we want to make sure that we are all very respectful, and that's within city government, and that's with everybody in our community. I really think there needs to be more of an effort, and, and it's not just Albany, but it's everywhere. We've got to get people to be able to be more cordial, be more nice, be more respectful of other people's opinions. And so there's, there's a lot of work that needs to be done, and it's not just here, it's kind of nationwide, too. So we can only hope for next year to be a lot better year than what 2020 has been, so. That's it then that I have. Peter, did you have anything?
We have an executive session.
We do have an executive session coming up, and I'll just very quickly tell you that Jorge and I worked on a community survey. I've talked to each one of you, I think, about that. That community survey will go live right around the election, just after the election, and it will be live for about a month. And you'll have a, a look at the questions at the first November meeting, and that's all.
Okay, and before I start reading the script on executive session, then our next meeting will be October 26. It's going to be a Budget Committee Work Session, and then our regular session is the 28. And for those of you that are new for our executive session, I'll have a script to read. We will, after, the video will come off, but you're able to, we will be logging it back up, but there is no other scheduled business. I'll just be immediately adjourning the meeting unless executive session has to take action, then our meeting will continue until it's adjourned on that. So, okay, thank you, folks. So now the city council will meet in executive session for the purpose of discussing litigation for ORS 192.6602H. Representatives of the news media and designated staff and other persons shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the go-to meeting at this time. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session. The go-to meeting will be reopened to the public. Members of the public should disconnect from the meeting now and then re-enter the meeting. Your screen will display the message, waiting for the City of Albany to unlock the meeting. Keep your screen open. When the council returns to open session, we will unlock the meeting, and you will automatically re-join the meeting. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report any of the deliberations during the executive session except to state the general subject of the session previously announced. No decision will be made in this executive session. And now recess to executive session at 8:56 PM. And now recess to executive session at 8:56 PM.